With a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. May we have a moment of silence to honor the military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriff deputies as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Beck.
Present.
Trustee McLoughlin.
Present.
Trustee Barnes.
Here.
All right, so we don't have any meeting minutes. Proclamations, and I'll turn it over to our zoning administrator, Mr. Eric Walker.
Good evening again, trustees and fiscal officer.
Good evening.
So today, we are excited because this year, we put on the Jefferson Township Neighborhood Leadership Institute. This program was eight weeks and allowed residents to get an inside look of township government, as well as we put in community partners, community organizations, and actually went and visited these locations. And these representatives spoke about what their services are and how it benefits the township, and how we can put them more into the township, but also it gave the participants an opportunity to learn about township government, how they can get further involved, and basically how township works compared to city, state, county, things like that, with regards to laws, ordinances, resolutions, and things like that. So I am proud today to present to you the 14 individuals with their certificates and their Neighborhood Leadership Institute graduate tee shirt as well for a presentation and pitch opportunity with the trustees.
Thank you. Would you like to go ahead with your presentation?
Absolutely.
Do you need any assistance?
Yeah, I was going to ask, Mr. Smith here. So the... Oh, you want me to do pictures? Oh, Lord. Exactly. So I would call everyone up and we can probably just take a picture here in the front. I'll probably just move the chairs back. So participating in the program was our trustee, trustee Beck. So I have hers. And then we have to get trustee Beck her actual tee shirt. Ms. Cindy Everts Lawson.
Y'all keep moving.
Yes, and then I can have all trustees come up to try to use a photo on the front. Ms. Marion Derrick.
You have a lot of information now, don't you, Marion?
Yes.
Good.
Ms. Michelle Cooper.
Miss Milas.
She's a bossy.
Mrs. Kelly. Could I be going at the same time, Mrs. Kelly as well?
All right. Oh, he's not here.
Ms. Vicki. Ms. Riley. Mr. Roberts.
Nice.
Ms. Janelle, Mary Cooper.
Yay!
And then this one is Ms. Catherine, and she's actually a City of Troywood resident, but you know Troywood working on my thing, so let her be a part of ours. Ms. Wood is not here either, she has family things, but Ms. Gibson is.
Yes, she is.
Ms. Rose Slatter.
Great job.
Last but certainly not least, Ms. Michelle Cooper. I paid the visit, I didn't say it.
Good.
And I will have all participants come up in front and we'll do one big picture. And then I will say, trustees, that the... Tee shirts were printed in-house by our own township administrator and the design and things like that on them.
So we save money across the board.
Yep. Yep, I thought I called you back, but then I realized it was late, I didn't.
You said what?
I said, I realized when I got to the evening, it was late and I didn't call you back. I thought I did. Thought I did the first time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for participating. You guys did a really good job. You guys did a really good job. Thank you. This is the first class and the first neighborhood leadership that any township has ever done.
That is correct.
Yeah, so we hope that more residents will be involved. And we can't go any further before we at least acknowledge our instructor and all the hard work he has done. He's got us a Jefferson... If you haven't seen it, there's a Jefferson Township bus, RTA bus, that's riding around with all the specs and information about Jefferson Township. He took us to different places, Central State, Goodwill, Ohio State Extension, the Sheriff Department, Road Zoning Administration, all were a part of it. And we just want to thank him with a clap, a clap of hands.
Thank you, trustees. We are excited because this program, with the inaugural class, then the next class, will have applications opening in the fall for our next round of our Jefferson Township, Jefferson Together Neighborhood Leadership Institute.
We also had to do a project, and so we had one project, and I wanted to make sure Eric saw the results. It's a salad in a bucket. And this happened since last...
Saturday.
Wow.
And it's a salad, it's a... What is it?
What are these missing?
The onions and radishes and lettuce. Yeah, so you think we're all a salad in a bucket in less than a week. So I wanted to make sure that you saw this because this was one of our projects. So I'm gonna set that right, so. Public comments.
So trustees, for tonight, there are three individuals for public comments. I will like to state for the record that speakers are asked to come up to the podium. They are limited to three minutes to address the trustees. The trustees do not have to respond to the comments. When coming to the podium, we do ask that you state your name and address for the record.
Thank you.
First up, Mrs. Derrick.
Marion Steve Derrick. 5140 Alton Road, Dayton, Ohio, Zico 45017. Okay, sorry about that question. The reason I'm speaking is I am proud of what's being done in Jefferson. You might have some people that don't understand. We have people working for us and they are doing an excellent job. I've seen the patches, patchwork, and some people, eh, they're not happy about it. They don't understand. If you live in Jefferson and winter comes and you run over a pothole, nobody likes that. I'm proud of my trustees. I'm proud of our administrator, zoning and coding. I have called a lot because some of my neighbors on the street think that they can come to Jefferson, purchase houses, not take care of them. The grass was, we've gotten rain. They didn't get cut. Had to call and give house details and things of that nature. But the major thing I'd like to say is because we have a neighborhood watch, I included it on Next Door comments. Because one guy was talking about somebody broke in his house even though he had an alarm system and stole his TV. And I said, you probably should think about getting a forum or something like what we have in Jefferson Township, the NAJT, because we discuss everything that needs to be discussed concerning our area. And like I said, most people don't understand. When you, when everybody says, if you see something, say something. And mostly, that's what I do. I try to help my neighbors. And I just like what's going on. And there's still people moving into the township that don't understand what they're doing. We don't want out here. And if somebody turns their name in, well, they didn't understand, there's rules out here now. And we want them to follow, to make it safer for their kids, everybody else's kids, and the neighbors. And especially the seniors, because as we get older, we don't want kids throwing bottles down and trash down. And people work hard, really work hard, to keep their grass and everything cut. And then you have a kid comes around, throws stuff everywhere and don't care where he's throwing it. But you know what? It's all stems from HT, and if you don't have it, you don't understand what it means. People take pride.
Thank you, Ms. Derrick.
Thank you, Marion.
Next up, again, Ms. Mabel Cross.
Mabel Cross, 5145 Tucson. I haven't been here in a while. But the lady before me, she gave a rousing report. Well, I don't have a rousing report because I live at 5145 Tucson Drive. I have the street is neighbors, my neighbors, I've had neighbors, I've been calling the police, have been on my house four times this month because of the neighbor across the street, because he parks his truck right in front of my house, on my side of the street. And they said he had four cars, four cars, and on his side and my side. Then I have a big pothole right on the side of my house. Then I have grass growing out, right in front of my house. And I just want something done about it. I'm so disgusted because we have, and our street is getting terrible. Ms. Beck lives from me, but in her area, and I'm, they keep it nice, it's nice. And I was, I was talking to her the other day, I wonder why the people, they got vacant houses on Derby. The roads are terrible. I'm not having the same experience Ms. Beck and I had. And I was wondering what can be done about it and when are the roads going to be fixed.
Mabel, my husband, that road again.
Tucson.
Tucson.
T-U-C-S.
You can come to my house, I'll show you. I walked around 5145 Tucson, a big pothole. Then we got, I didn't have any trouble, one of the neighbors, I had to call the police. The police bring up to my house by a time, it's a record.
You have the, the address that you're referencing with the high grass.
As soon as you come off of, I think that's Infirmary and turn right, it's on, that's Tucson.
Oh, and Tucson. The road superintendent, he's aware of it, the high grass, I sent your picture of right there, coming on, off of Derby onto Tucson, at that vacant house. It's on, it's on your list.
So I was over there today, I cut on Ford, on Ford Main today.
I've seen it.
Up in Derby after me and the only guy on duty today was truck doing asphalt. So I remember this staff. I'm not fooling staff like the city of Dayton. It just takes time. I appreciate patience, and then we'll get there.
It's been a long time. I've never have seen Jefferson look this bad. I'm just saying, in the last six years.
And then after overnight, I've only been here a year.
So the, the house that's across the street from you, is that the one that you're referencing?
About what?
With the...
No, that's it. Soon as you come off of, is that Infirmary, turn right, it's right there. I have a picture of it.
That one's way away from what she's saying.
I say, yeah, that, because I was looking it up and that, that's not on Tucson, so it's off of Infirmary.
It's on Derby, right?
No, no, it's, it's on, the one she's talking about is on Tucson. But it's on, I know it's on the list because I reported it to our road superintendent. So he's aware of it. Yes. The paperwork, yes.
So as the paperwork goes in, I did. Okay, thank you for sharing.
Mr. McLaughlin. Next up, we have Mrs. Lawson.
Cindy Everts Lawson, 801 Calumet Lane, and I actually just have a comment. I sat through the working session, which I always do, and I understand that you are wanting to save some money on these Bobcat accessories. And I understand why you want to do that, but I want to give you a little food for thought. If you save a couple hundred dollars on these accessories, you're also losing a couple hundred dollars and hours of work that our road worker could be using to rectify some of these issues in our township by trying to save some grant money that we wouldn't have without the grant anyway. So my suggestion, as a Jefferson Township resident and homeowner, is stop wasting his time, and either you do the footwork on saving these couple hundred dollars, or let's get on with it and get these pieces so that we don't halfway do everything. Jefferson Township is the place to be. Let's keep that in mind.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that all?
Mm-hmm.
Moving forward, resolution for consideration, Resolution 23-097. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees rescind Resolution 23-062. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees authorizes the ARPA 12023 Moretz International 7x18 AR14K for midway trailers not to exceed $8,100.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-097. I second that motion.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Beck.
Yes.
Trustee Barnes.
Yes.
Trustee McLoughlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 23-098. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees authorizes the ARPA 12023 Quality Pro Tilt Equipment Trailer, 17,000 GBW, 82x26, 15 tilt 6 stationary, dual electric brakes, radial tires, LED lights from Custom Wave Trailer Sales, not to exceed $9,500.
Correct.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-098.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
I guess it doesn't have it. Okay. Trustee Beck.
Yes.
Trustee Barnes.
Yes.
Trustee McLoughlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Page five of five down.
Thank you.
Resolution 23-099. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees authorizes a single-source ARPA 1770T for Bobcat compact track loader and attachment from Perry Bobcat of Dayton not to exceed $143,689. I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution 23-099.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Beck.
Yes.
Trustee Barnes.
Yes.
Trustee McLoughlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Five of five down.
Thank you.
Okay, Resolution 23-0100. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees authorizes the ARPA... Wait a minute.
Should be 100?
23.
Resolution 100?
Yes.
Should be the law firm.
Jefferson Township Board of Trustees approves the payment from the legal on here, this one. Unless I'm confused.
That's it?
Yeah, the...
That's it.
Okay, all right. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees approves the payment from legal services for Coolidge Wall not to exceed $6,693.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution 23-100. I'll second that.
Say, just for clarity, in the language of this, you'll see that it shows 24 properties were submitted and 13 were completed. Some of those properties came off because they were actually commercial properties and not residential. So that's a whole different ballgame.
All right, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Beck.
Yes.
Trustee Barnes.
Yes.
Trustee McLoughlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, I'm excited about this one. Resolution 23-101. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees adopts the Jefferson Township Personnel Policy Manual. I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution 23-101.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Beck.
Yes.
Trustee McLoughlin.
Yes.
Trustee Barnes.
We're done with that.
All right, Sheila.
Oh, motion carries. I was a little bit excited.
Thank you.
Resolution 23-102. Resolution by the Board of Trustees of Jefferson Township Montgomery County, Ohio, declaring the property situated at 401 Knox Avenue, Dayton, Ohio 45417, parcel ID number G27245060003, unsecure and unsafe in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 505.86, and scheduling a public hearing to determine whether this is dangerous property, whether this dangerous property should be secured... whether this dangerous property should be secured, repaired, or demolished and removed. I'd like to make a motion to accept resolution twenty-three dash one zero two.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments?
Uh, um. Uh, accordance is spelled wrong on here also, it's a mess, so.
Yeah. Th- these ones unfortunately, they, the law firm actually does them and then drops them off, that's why we said from now, we're gonna do them in-house so that we can actually proofread and edit and put them out correctly. Um, but, so this property is one that July fifth, you will have before you the opportunity to, um, demolish those eleven properties. This property, there will be a public hearing for, um, basically when we first started the process with those eleven, it starts the process with these, uh, with this one, and then this will be the process going forward for all properties that we intend to demolish.
Oh, um, does somebody, um, motion?
I'm sorry.
Somebody make the motion and somebody-
I made the motion.
And who's second?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Wow, I can't even see the house, is that a house?
Yes. Now, and, and this was, the pictures were taken during the winter time, so now that the trees have grown back with the leaves, so it's probably hidden, hidden behind the tree.
Wow.
So. Okay. Got it.
Wow, these are all on there too?
Yes.
Sure it wasn't a junkyard?
This was the one that's on Bricker? Or no, this is the one that's on Knox.
Yeah, you pretty much can't see it now. Eric, when they're torn down, um, so after they're torn down, what happens?
So the, the process is, the, the land bank will, um, the land bank gets a bid for the demolition of the property. Um, the first order that they may do is they may advertise it for sale through the land bank. Um, and what they'll try to do is sell it with the property taxes that it's owed, if not, then they'll just use the state dollars for the demolition to tear it down. The property then stays with the land bank for three years as a vacant lot, which then they still try to sell, if not, then in three years it's returned to the township as a property the township will then own.
Is the sale price the amount that's owed on the back taxes?
Correct, um, and then it's, it's a combination of both with the sales tax that is owed, um, plus the, I think it's about fifteen percent of the value of the property is added to the taxes as well.
Oh, okay. Did we sign off on that?
Trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Barnes?
Motion carries. And so after that, it goes through that process with the land bank and they don't sell it, then it comes back to the township?
Yes, in three years, um, it will come back to the township. Um, I am excited because of the July fifth meeting, I will, on the work session, present, um, a new program that we're looking at as far as for residents to buy a lot next to their property off of something similar to lot links, but it's the township owned properties that we currently have on our roster that we'll look to get rid of to residents in the township.
Oh, okay. So they could extend, there, if there's a property that's open, they can extend their property? Now, would they have to pay property taxes on both, or does it come together?
Correct, so what, the process with that, it would, currently the township, there's no taxes that is on it, besides what the township pays, um, an individual that potentially buys a property that's next door to theirs, then they do have the option to have that remain as a single lot, or actually join together both lots and just have one big parcel instead of the separate one.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. Okay, resolution twenty-three one zero three?
Yes.
Resolution by the Board of Trustees of Jefferson Township Montgomery County, Ohio, ordering the demolition and removal of the structure situated at three oh one Bricker Avenue, Dayton, Ohio, four five four one seven, parcel ID number G twenty-seven one eight three zero nine zero one zero nine, which property is titled in the name of Manila Folder Properties LLC, which property has been found by the Jefferson Township Fire Chief to be in, unsecure, unsafe, and in violation of the Ohio Fire Code.
I can make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash one oh three.
And for, for clarity, for this property, it is one that will now be advertised for, with the land bank, for a quote to actually demolish this property.
Violation is spelled wrong, and who put the numbers on this resolution?
I put the number on the first page.
You forgot to put twenty-three in front of it, so you guys got initial.
Okay.
Um, the first page is signed. No, you know what, I'm not gonna worry about it, just sign the last pa- oh, no, not yet. Roll call, you ready?
Uh, yes, roll call, sorry.
Um, trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Barnes?
Yes.
Okay, now you can sign, oh, this is twenty-one, seven ten.
Motion carries.
Give me too much work to do, Eric.
I'm sorry.
And I need the initial, where, trustee?
Alright, it's on this paper, don't worry about it.
Alright. Resolution twenty-three, uh, dash one zero four, Jefferson Township Board of Trustees levy a tax on motor vehicle license pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section four five zero four, uh, one eight one.
I can make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash one oh four.
I second, any questions, any comments? Roll call, please.
Um, trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee Barnes?
Motion carries.
So there's no more steps to this, right, this, this, you just email it and?
Correct, yep, I just email a copy and then send them a certified copy in the mail.
Certified mean you need a copy of the original, or a copy of, a copy is fine?
A copy of the original.
Okay.
Um, and then what I'll do is send that to the state, um, and it will take effect July first of this year.
Right.
Am I being correct, that is a five dollars?
Yeah, that's the first five dollars. Yep, the, the second resolution is the second five dollar one.
Resolution twenty-three one zero five, Jefferson Township Board of Trustees levy a tax on motor vehicle license pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section four five oh four dot one eight. I'd like to make a motion to accept resolution twenty-three one zero five.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee Barnes? Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes, I'm staying.
You stay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, they sign. Wow. Thank you.
Okay, trustee reports, um, I returned calls, um, we, um, put, uh, with the Neighborhood Association and the trustees, we put on an employee appreciation event. Um, it went really well, was an opportunity for our sheriff and the residents and our staff to all come together and spend a day to be able to eat and, you know, talk amongst each other, and so it went really well, so we want to thank the Neighborhood Association for their part, um, and, um, thank our employees for just doing a great job. And I also went out to look at a couple of reports that I got from people calling about grass, potholes, and, um, just community issues, and that's about all that I have.
So, uh, answered some phone calls, there's some, uh, people worried about some zoning changes, we'll talk to you a little bit about, um, in regards to what's going on in certain parts of the township. Looked at some used equipment and, um, also answered some phone calls about some ditch work. So, and I'm act- anxious to get back on the cul-de-sac, I hear that the check's been written and, um, we'll get the cul-de-sac and start getting some pipe.
Can I ask a question, what are the zoning, what's the problem with the zoning issue? Oh, okay, I figured if a resident had talked to you about it, should have been something we should be able to know, be aware of, but okay.
Um, did you, um, you said you hear about the, um, the checks being written, or did you sign the check?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I spoke to several residents about some of the cleanup, with, uh, with the zoning and the zoning officers have been, uh, been on about, and they seem to, I believe, I think the Sondra actually contacted them, I went out and took a look at it, they are making it, some of the town's to clean it, so I told them it shouldn't be a whole, you know, long-term making an attempt to get things cleaned up, like, who'd be happy? I did the same with, took out the ad, but it was very important on, excellent too.
Thanks, Borough. Thank you. Um, any other questions?
No, I, I'll just add that the City of Dayton Waste Collection Bill should have went out or currently are going out, and just as a reminder to residents that, um, paying it in advance prevents the township of doing an assessment to the property tax bill, which adds an additional five percent, just as a way to save money, if you pay it upfront, then you don't get an additional five percent add-on at the end.
The, the, actually, the property tax bill comes at the beginning of the year, has to be paid by June.
No, this is for the waste collection bill, uh, so this-
I meant, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So once it, yeah, not paying it to the City of Dayton, the trustees passed the resolution added to the property taxes bill, which then adds an additional five percent for the waste collection fee.
I mean, I'm just saying that we'll get, in July or sometime, we'll get the list of all those properties-
Right.
-that didn't pay, and those will be assessed to the property tax at that time, so if you haven't paid it by Ju- June, you're gonna get acce- assessed for next year. Can I make one more comment? Can't even remember the property cleaned on, um, Denneby Road, next, behind the gas station? They didn't, you seeing all that pile, some more stuff in there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Is that the? Is it, the, the cross from the school?
No, yes, cross from the-
Yeah, they, I saw someone jump, dumped a du- uh, refrigerator over there now as well.
We had, uh, we had, uh, actually, a couple guys, caught an individual that was actually dumping there. Information, car plate number, turned over to, uh, Deputy, uh, Jackson. She called me, she says she ran the plate, but the plate goes to a vehicle down in Hamilton, that's not the vehicle that was reported, so, uh.
Like, is there a way that we can, I know they could still tear it down, but at least have something to lock something off so that nobody can drive up there and drop it? I, I, that's just a suggestion, I don't know what the trustees-
That, that is actually one property that is on the next round of demolition properties.
Alright, if there's not any more questions, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, during the meeting.
Second.
Um, roll call, please.
Trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yeah.
One of staying? Trustee Barnes?
Thanks, trustee.
It is, uh, seven forty-seven, meeting adjourned.